All right, my phone says nine o'clock. If you will, please, let's stand and we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to take care of county business. We are grateful for the trust that you have placed on us, and we pray, Father, that we would be worthy of that trust and that we would handle business in the best interest of the citizens of this county. We thank you for the trust that they have put in us. We just pray for this agenda, that each item will be handled appropriately and that we can take care of the county business, at least as of today. We just thank you for this day. We pray for your protection on our first responders, our military, wherever they may be serving. We pray for the conflict abroad in Ukraine, that you would bring that to an end. Father, we just turn this meeting over to you, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, we are gathering for our, I believe, final meeting of the month of March 2022. Today is the 28th, it's just after 9:00 a.m. Item number one is our public comment time. If anyone in the audience has anything that they would like to address the court on, this is your opportunity to do that. Of course, you may address the court on any of the ensuing agenda items as well. I'll take that as a no, and we will move on to considering and possibly approving the minutes from two weeks ago on March 14th.
Motion.
Motion to approve that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion, comment? All in favor, say aye. Item three and four will be dealt with by Nathan Tofoya, the executive director of the Mount Pleasant Economic Development Corporation. He is en route. He did tell me that he would be a few minutes late when we booked this, but I wanted to be able to get him and get him in and get him out quickly. I'm going to move on to item number five. Jody, just before you could get calmed down, we're going to get to your item right now. And I'm going to have, Jody is here to answer any questions and kind of explain what is going on, but we have a situation here, and I'm not exactly sure of the dates. Jody can tell us about that, but as you will recall, we approved a bid from Luke DeFrane, I guess, about coming up on two years ago. And Barbara, what's the right wording? This was a, potentially a three-year commitment, if giving the court each year the ability to continue another year or not?
Yes, sir.
And is that price fixed on behalf of the vendor?
The price is fixed unless the bid includes an escalation clause, and this one did not.
Okay. So we have a situation where we entered into that contract to provide our lawn maintenance with Luke DeFrane. Jody's going to tell you about a transfer of ownership or responsibilities, I'm not exactly sure. And so the person who was, I guess, our primary contact or the owner of the business that was taking care of our lawn maintenance has changed. So before I say anything else that's erroneous, Jody, will you come up to the mic here at the podium and tell us what your role is, when the role of Luke changed?
Hi, Senator. First of all, I'm Jody Brown. I have a newer company to Mount Pleasant, JBX3. I purchased ROK Enterprises.
ROK, that's how Luke was doing business?
Correct, and all his contracts. And at that time, Luke was going to leave this one contract in his name to do the right thing, I guess, because he was found by a contractor and had no problem. And I just want to do the right thing, starting business in town and doing whatever and make sure that insurance is kept up and all that. So my guys have still been doing it. It's the same two guys. That's the reason I bought the company for those two guys, actually. And really just want to make sure things are done properly. And that's what I told Mr. Lee the other day, if I lose the contract, I don't. But it's me who's doing the lawn now and subcontracting through ROK still because of the contract bound, but in the end, I just want to.
And I'll ask you a couple of detailed questions in a moment, but just to clarify for the court, Jody came to me. I didn't call him and say, what's going on? And he said, just want you to know what's happening between, in this relationship between ROK, Luke DeFrane, and Jody Brown and JBX3 LLC. And so whatever we need to do, he is saying, you know, I'm at your mercy, you just tell me what to do. So where we are, we are about to wrap up the second year of what could potentially be a three-year commitment on behalf of Luke. But he's telling you that in the midst of this contract, Jody has bought the contract, bought the jobs, bought whatever you want to call it, from Luke. And you bought, you got with that some employees, not that you own those employees, but they worked for him, they work for you, they're still the ones doing our work. And so I felt like it was appropriate that we be transparent about this and let everyone know that, you know, before somebody turned up and said, well, I need to talk to Luke DeFrane, well, Luke's not really the one making day-to-day decisions. So the way I see it, in my opinion, we should allow Jody to continue on unless we have issues with Jody and his work, which we could have brought up anyway, even if it was still Luke doing the work. This second year will end sometime this summer, Barbara, like July, August, is that about where we are? And so I think that we need to, if you're willing to, you need to approve the fact that we are, we have subrogated, or Luke has subrogated his work, his contract over to Jody, and we're either going to allow that to continue, or we're going to bring it to a stop and rebid it. You could bring it to the end of the second year and then rebid it, or you could say, you know what, we've got a good thing going here, we could even extend a third year. So I'm not going to tell you which one of those you ought to do, I'm just going to say, I want this, I want this to be on record, and you guys decide what you would like to do. If you have any questions for Jody, there you go.
I like it. Everything's doing good. I think we ought to extend it, that extra year.
Well, we're not to that point yet.
We do it in the summertime?
We'll do it in the summertime. I think as a bare minimum, I think that you could make that decision when it's time to decide whether or not you're going to extend a third year. I think, I think what you should do now, and no more, is allow Jody to continue the work until the end of this contract year number two. I don't know that I would make decisions beyond that at this point.
All right, I might get motion.
Okay. So your motion is to allow JBX3 LLC to assume all responsibilities of ROK Enterprises, which was Luke DeFrane, the previous contractor?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any comments or questions here? Anything you want to know from Jody? Jody, is there anything else you want to tell us?
I don't, I just want them to keep doing the proper thing.
Barbara?
May I ask one question?
You may.
I want to make sure we have the insurance coverage.
Oh, yeah, I'll have to pull the box where you have it.
You have general liability and workers' comp?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And can, how so quickly can you provide her with those? You got it today. Very good.
He's prepared.
Thank you very much.
Well, and I thank you for bringing that up. I knew the answer to that, but I, that needs to be on the record, too. And that's one of the most important components of this contract. We want to be sure that the county is protected and that we have contractors that have the appropriate comp insurance and liability insurance and things like this in force.
And for me also, I want to make sure that all our, everything is in line.
All right.
May I have your excuse?
Well, we're going to vote. Want to see? But then you can be excused. So you don't need to go back to your seat. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. There you go. Now you can go.
Thank you. I will email.
Okay.
First off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's jump right back to the previous item. We have items three and four that are somewhat related, but we'll take them one at a time. And Nathan Tofoya is here. Welcome, Nathan. Glad you're here to explain this. And we are going to consider and possibly approve participation and a letter of commitment towards the Texas Department of Agriculture's Texas Rural Business Fund grant in the amount of $30,000 for improvements to County Road 2200 to support current and future industry operations. There's a lot going on here, but this is an exciting project that's going to do good things for the city, for the county, for folks that live on County Road 2200, and for one of our premier businesses in this community, Diamond C. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, nice to be here this morning. Thanks for having me. I'm Nathan Tofoya, Director for Economic Development here in Mount Pleasant. And I just come in here today to talk to you a little bit about a public-private partnership that we think would kind of benefit everyone, where we think we have an opportunity to be the first or the second. At this point, I might be the second, but we still might be the first applicant to this new, newer Texas Department of Agriculture grant, which is specifically set up for rural communities. And they love the idea of doing infrastructure projects for manufacturing operations in companies that are doing, creating jobs and making investments. So Diamond C, down at the south end of town, that location, I guess we need to say which location now, which campus, their original headquarters campus, there are just south of them, there's a County Road 2200, there's about 20, 25 homes down there that are in the county. I think the city boundary kind of stops somewhere right in the middle of Diamond C's property. Originally, this started off, the city had been looking at, trying to be a good neighbor. If you don't know, in the past three years, Diamond C has made significant improvements, powder coating operations and all that. And so they have trucks going across that road, and it's kind of been tearing up the road as they go to each building. And so really, they approached us about participating in, you know, road improvement, and it was only like 650 feet or so. And it was only really to the, to the city boundary, well, it wasn't, it was kind of in the middle of driveways. And so we were like, well, why don't we just make this right? And I talked to Diamond C a couple of years ago, and I knew that they had plans for parts of their campus. And so we went back to them and said, hey, can you show us those drawings? What are you guys doing? And they're like, we actually need, if this would really help us, they're planning within the next 18, 24 months to actually make that expansion, which is even south of their campus. So it'll even make that road more viable. And if you don't know, when I got here in 2018, mid-2018, they had 220 employees, they're at 680 right now, and they think they'll be at 800 employees by the end of this year. And they're, they're just growing still. And if, we just closed last week on the facility, the spec building that's been sitting on in our business park on I-30, they purchased that building, going to be putting their tech, their technology assessment center, I forget, I think it's the assessment, I think that's what the A stands for, in that facility. So if you go out there now, there's a lot there where going on, they're putting in, they had a, bought a huge laser, industrial laser that they're putting in there, it's a two-star laser, came in on 12 different trucks across the Atlantic. And so we're really excited about the investments they're making, the growth that they're having. And as you may know, grants, this is the way grants work, the more participation you can have, the better. So the company's willing to put in, as is appropriate, EDC will work in the city and would love to have the county's participation. And we think it's a significant cost savings. We were looking at, it was kind of a sticker shop, we were, we were a kid, nobody was really expecting the cost to make it work for them. But if we can go after this grant and we're successful, we think it'll be a significant cost savings, low expenditure and high impact grant if we can get it. So just like you consider, one, the first one is, if you'd be willing, we're all, would like to all cost share evenly, 30,000 each. And then there are, if you look at the application from the Texas Department of Agriculture, there's clauses in there, which is difficult in any agreements, especially in economic development, if there's a failure to perform with a job creation, there's repayment kicks in. And so in that event, just to have, because they asked us to outline how that repayment would be done, that's why the second item is in there. Would you guys consider participating at that level with, for a total, it was estimated through KSA Engineering at 813,000.
Let's get to that one in a second. Kind of overload.
Sorry. So the first one would be, the first item agenda is asking for the 30,000 to participate in the grant.
Okay, let's break this down. First of all, the problem is, we've got a road that's in bad need of repair, and it continues to get punished daily by heavy traffic going in between Diamond C operations. And 2200 runs north-south, parallel to 271 south, and perpendicular to, can you think of the? 3417. And the point of contact at 3417, and for several hundred feet, is in the city, is in the city limits.
Yeah, about 680.
About 680. But south of that, it becomes a county road. And so we have about 25 of our residents, that is their primary access back to 271, to get back into town. And so they're having to drive on some pretty lousy road there that has suffered the, you know, some of the negatives that come with progress. And originally, when you came to me a few months ago, you were, just so you all know, we never got to this discussion, I mean, he was asking me for a whole lot more money because we thought we were going to have to complete this project without a grant. And we were talking about, you know, six figures at that point. So this grant is going to enable the repairs that you initially thought would be about 680 feet. Now it's going to be, how long? Is that still the total length?
I think it's 13, it's literally doubled, a little more than doubled, it's 1300, I believe.
But it does now expand onto county property, onto county?
Yes, 1350, so about approximately 1350 linear feet. And so after city limits end, it just, yeah, it's literally double almost inside the county.
So not only does it take care of current problems, but it also addresses the road further south that will possibly be negatively impacted when they continue their expansion. And so we have four participants in this project. Diamond C is willing to kick in some money to fix their road, the city, the county, and the Economic Development Corporation. So this is a group effort here. A lot of bang for the buck. The total price of this job is about what?
813, just north of that, 813,000.
813. And this is a 20% match? What is this?
They require 10%. And so we're going a little bit higher, closer to like 14, just to be a good neighbor.
All right. And so Nathan is asking us, and hopefully we are granted this Texas Rural Business Fund grant. And if so, we'll get, for a 14% investment on the total job cost, these four entities working together can achieve, you know, close to a million dollars worth of road improvement. Will all of that be concrete? That holds 1300, that's about a quarter mile?
Yes, so we're looking to do it right. So we're not looking to do this for another 30, 50 years.
Okay, so we'll have a nice concrete road that is in county property, it's in city property, it serves the needs of Diamond C, and it helps people get back and forth without having a terrible road to ride on. So you've already, have you applied yet for this?
We're, so letters of commitment are needed for the application, so we're just wrapping those pieces up, and we should have it in by the end of this week.
Okay. Well, before we get to, well, I'll tell you what, let's, it'll help them make this decision, let's talk about item number four. And this is a situation, if Diamond C was not able to meet their commitment as far as new employees added as a result of this expansion, and it nullified the grant, is that the word that you use for it? It makes it, we're sorry you didn't meet your obligations, you know, we're not funding that grant. Now explain to us what happens, what's the failsafe here, and what do you need from us if, for some reason, they don't meet their goals?
So repayment triggers. So we just, we pay what the grant would have covered. And just to clarify, too, the grant, the maximum award is a million, so we were getting towards that higher piece of it, so that's one reason why we went above the 10%. I already have the city's letter of commitment, but, and I go off on tangents, your question specifically was, explain, oh, what happened?
Well, so that they can make a decision about that number two, they need to know that there is a possibility that, you know, we don't, not everything turns out perfectly. And so therefore, what are we willing to do in the event that that grant doesn't come through? And we've committed to this project and, in the hopes of that grant paying, but if Diamond C doesn't meet their total new employee count, the Department of Agriculture could say, ah, sorry, you didn't achieve your goals, we're not giving you the grant money.
They could call the note, right? So, and the best way to look at this, and it's two items, because it's more for government, but the best, is look at this as a worst case scenario. Worst case scenario, would you be willing to commit at the six-figure number, 100,000? Best case, they meet everything, everybody's, they hire, which we have 101% confidence they will. And then it's a $30,000 commitment. But worst case scenario, 100,000 for this project.
Why just 100,000 from the county? Who pays the rest of that 813?
There would be the city and the county, would probably ask the business to participate a little bit. It was, I know we had spoken, it was me not trying to come to the county for the first time and be like, hey, everyone. That was just a number I, I came up with that, that was an eighth of the project, and there's definitely no limit to that, but.
Well, I appreciate you giving us the good news and the bad news. So like you said, this is a worst-case scenario in item number four, but I don't think that any of us would enter into this if we didn't believe in Diamond C and their ability to hit these numbers. So any questions before I even attempt to call for a vote?
Judge Lee, I have some questions. I don't know when would be the right time for me to ask them.
This is the time.
Okay.
And if you'll pull that mic up a little bit.
I'm Barbara Sherman, I'm the county auditor, Nathan. Who manages the grant reporting? Will that be through the EDC?
Yes, the grant reporting will be the EDC.
Okay. And what's the timeline for repayment if we were, if this $100,000 requirement were to be triggered? When, how long would that be? When would we know that?
So I, that's a good question. I don't, I think they have a year to two or three years to hit the levels. I don't imagine it would be within any current or near future funding cycles or fiscal cycles.
Yes. And so the final closeout then, is you think in three years or?
Yes, it would definitely, it wouldn't be in 2022, and it wouldn't be in 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. Commissioner Fitch, what is, so again, about how much of this is in, you've got several hundred feet that are in the county that need some work on it. Even in the worst-case scenario, this seems to me to be a pretty good use of money to get a concrete road and a quarter of a mile long.
I was just wishing a start on that, at the city limits and head south, so that'd go a long ways. 662 feet of it would be concrete, that's good.
What do you think that might have lost?
Just that 662? Like 10,000, like 15,000? I don't know how wide they're going to go. How wide are they going to go, Nathan?
So the engineering report I have, it's from Lanny Buck, the city's kind of engineer contact. I'm, I, the spec sheet I have just says, you know, concrete, archaeological, geotech. It doesn't necessarily specify length, which is one reason why it's kind of been, it was kind of nebulous and I had to go do research for my own. So there's no width. I'm trying to remember the depth. I do remember him telling me, we were at a, we were going to be at manufacturing, you know, distribution level depth of concrete.
Yeah, he said.
And the width, I would, I don't know what's there, now if it's 30, 35, I don't, I don't have that, I can get that to you.
I was thinking they said 10-inch, it's going to be 10 inches of concrete.
That makes sense.
And it's 1350 feet long. I believe it's going to be wider, because a lot of big trucks turn in right there, and they'll have to have like a lane where cars will pass them. I'm thinking that's going to be a little bit wider than it is now, it's about 24 at the widest right now.
You're talking about the KSA report, right?
That'd be nice.
I mean, we're definitely, if you've seen the business park, we try to relay the foundations really early, and we'll do it right, and we'll, that's a, that's a good point, we'll make sure we're looking at that, because with the facility that's expected to go in, we'll have a lot of trucks going into it as well.
Yeah, to do my end, if they're going to turn in down at that far end, it's had to be pretty thick with a pretty decent base on it, so I'm not sure what it costs me. It'll be pretty expensive, and it's going to need some pretty heavy topping on it, you know, and I don't do concrete, so it'll be best doing it in concrete, so.
Well, and we could spend 10 minutes talking about the, you know, the side benefits here. You think about what Diamond C has done to the tax base for this community in their purchase of Parker Trailers, their purchase of the property in the business park, their purchase of property on industrial, the addition of employees, we can go on and on and on. I mean, this is money that I believe we are going to more than get back just from the ad verum taxes and the benefits that we're seeing on the improvements and the expansion and the value put here in the county by Diamond C.
And they've never asked for a tax abatement of any sort, so.
Never asked for a tax abatement.
Really growing. I'm excited about it.
We'll break it into two parts here. I think that they probably should go together. I'd hate to see you approve one and not the other. You've got to take the good with the bad, but I think there's a, of course, there's a slight chance that they wouldn't hit their employee numbers, but number three, are you willing to participate and give a letter of commitment in this four-way effort to achieve this grant and pay for these improvements?
I think it's a good deal. And I also think that we'll probably be doing some more participation and stuff like this in the future for some other companies, too, so, yeah. Make amendment to approve the 30,000 commitment first.
Motion comes from Fitch on item number four, to approve participation and give a letter of commitment towards this Texas Department of Agriculture grant. Yeah, item number three, did I say four? Item number three. And this is the one that will ask for $30,000 worth of commitment from the county.
Second?
I have a motion, Fitch, and a second, Parchman. Any other questions for Nathan?
I have one more, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
If this gets approved, when will you meet our, the county's meeting?
That's a good question. It would probably take a few months, I don't know, it'd probably be maybe summertime, around June or so.
Okay. I just needed a general idea. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. And you? Any opposed? All right, along with that, consider and possibly approve participation and a separate letter of commitment towards this same grant in an amount up to $100,000 in the event that job creation targets are not met and the public-private partners enter into full repayment of the improvements estimated on 22, County Road 2200, at a cost of $813,250.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch. Commissioner Parker seconds. Any discussion, final questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and there are none. That's what you want. Thank you, Nathan. I appreciate your work on this project and, uh, all the other things you've got going on, but congratulations getting that spec building in the, uh, Highway 30 industrial parts sold to these guys. And I don't know what a piece of equipment costs that takes 12 semis to deliver it, but I've got to believe that it's pretty pricey. And that will go inside of that building. It's a, a massive, uh, laser, cutting-edge technology. Oh, two stories. Wow. That's, that's a big deal. All right. Thank you. Item number six, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start with number one. Please, sir, Commissioner Parchman.
We had several things going on this month. We've been installing culverts, still doing a lot of side cutting, patching potholes, had cut quite a few dead trees down that were about to fall down and digging up some soft spots on County Road 1400.
Precinct two, we've been, uh, cleaning our bridges off and cleaning the guardrails up and cutting the brush and, uh, trees and such that have grown up too close to the bridges away. And we did a lot of side cutting all around the county and we still continue doing that. And, uh, we, uh, had to do a lot of ditch cleaning and culvert cleanouts after last week's heavy rains that we had and had limbs and a few trees that needed to be trimmed after the heavy rain. It was a, a good washout.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, we've been, uh, we started patching potholes and around the county and we, uh, on County Road 3365, we put in three culverts and digging the ditches and getting ready to start chip sealing and be ready to go there and, uh, we're getting that ready. And we put tons, about more trees and stuff on, uh, some other roads, but we've been pretty busy.
Okay. Commissioner Parker?
Uh, we've been, been patching and, uh, last week we worked on, three days last week, we worked on, uh, 4275, had a section about, oh, about 300 yards long that, that, uh, was kind of sinking in on us and we, we went in there and, and tore it all up and replaced, or got the base back up to where it needed to be and, and, uh, got it all taken care of. Uh, the, my part-time hand started today, going, uh, he does my side cutting and stuff for me. So he started today, hope to be, be getting some of that done, uh, here over the next few weeks.
Thank you. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve the Titus County Appraisal District's request for retention of 2021 budget surplus. We have done this at least once, and I think twice while I have been here, the appraisal district in their budgeting for the year ends their year with a budget surplus and they are asking that they be given permission to retain that budget surplus. Let me read this brief letter here from the Secretary, David Greider, is one of the appointed members of the board there. Uh, during the meeting held on March 7, the Board of Directors instructed me to give the taxing units notice that the board will take action to amend the district's 2022 budget at its next meeting. The amount of the 2022 budget amendment is $120,561 and represents the amount of surplus money left over from the 2021 budget year. Your taxing unit's 2022 allocation will not increase if the Board of Directors amends the budget. The reason the board wants to retain the funds and amend the 2022 budget is so that the district can better prepare for its current litigation brought by property owners. Outside appraisal reports for litigation may cost around $15,000 per account, per year, and the district may need as many as nine reports. The district's current litigation budget is only $23,000. This is not sufficient to properly defend the district considering the number of cases currently pending. The Board of Directors plans to adopt the 2022 budget amendment at its April 11 board meeting. If you have any questions, please contact Shirley Dickerson. So they've given you the reason why they want to hang on to this surplus rather than distributing it back to the individual entities that they represent. They're saying, will you please allow us to hold that in our war chest as we get ready to deal with up to nine, uh, litigations that will require some obviously expensive appraisal work? And so if we allow them to take that, that's not, that's not our entire portion, that $120,000. The part that is the Titus County is $18,693 would be returned to us. Uh, you have other participants there, City of Mount Pleasant, their share is about $16,000, Mount Pleasant ISD about $51,000, the college $6,000, the hospital $9,000. So again, we play about almost $19,000 of that entire 122. So their request is, please let us keep that in our, uh, in, in our bank account and we will increase the, uh, total available funds in the 2022 budget to deal with these lawsuits. I think that's a reasonable request.
Make a motion that we, uh, grant them the request.
Made by Commissioner Fitch to allow the appraisal district to retain their 2021 budget surplus. Second by Commissioner Parchman. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I've got one. Do, uh, uh, what if some of the other entities decide not to let them keep it? Will it, will that affect us anyway?
Don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I guess though, I would think that they would probably come back to us. I don't think, it'd be tough for them to turn right or, I, I don't know how that works. I mean, that's a reasonable question. I'm assuming that they're counting on this happening. My guess is they would have to regather and come back with a different request. Maybe a partial retention or something like that. But, but again, they're either going to have to ask for it in the new budget, in which case they're going to come right back and ask for more money, but they're telling you that they will not if they're allowed this. Best answer I can give you.
Okay.
I'm going to need a second if you're so inclined.
Jeff second.
Jeff did, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number eight, consider and possibly approve the following items related to the sheriff's office, and these have to do with bid processes. Barbie, you've put together a great narrative here. Do you want me to read that or do you want to put a more concise, uh, presentation together for us to explain what we need to do here?
Whichever way you prefer, essentially.
Well, I, I bet you can cut that verbiage in half if you kind of explain to it. You're, you're good about putting difficult things and simplifying them in words that we can understand.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, what we have before us today is a request for, uh, an exemption from competitive bidding for the purchase of food for the jail inmates. We currently have a contract with Five Star Corrections and there are some requirements out there relating to competitive bidding. Uh, one of the reasons why I'm requesting that y'all approve this is if we do go with competitive bidding, there are requirements related to calories, carbohydrates, all those kinds of things. And I believe that's something that Sheriff Ingram needs to continue to manage. He's done that in the past. Um, my office, I mean, I don't think we need to be talking about what the nutrition needs are of the, the men, the people in jail. I want to allow Sheriff Ingram to continue to do that. But in order to do that, commissioners have to approve a discretionary exemption. Um, that's the first step. And that would allow the sheriff or his designee, and I believe that Captain Price is going to be instrumental in that process, to solicit telephone or written bids. The commissioners also have to approve a form. I sent that form to you because this item will need to come back to you for approval. And then to continue, I also ask the commissioners to continue with the five-year solicitation calendar. That is in the statute, five years. Um, you can do it earlier. You can make that decision or the sheriff can make that decision to do it earlier, but the requirement is five years. We are within that at this time. So if you approve the discretionary exemption, then the sheriff's responsibilities are to solicit at least three bids. Now, please keep in mind that a no bid counts as a bid. So if they contact a company and the company says, you know, we don't service that area, we're not able to meet your needs, that still counts as a bid. Um, they have to record the bid solicited and the vendors on the form. That's what the form is for. And, uh, I then have to contact those vendors and make sure that they did indeed get a phone call or an opportunity. That's why the form is here so that I'll have, they will give me that information, I'll make phone calls. Um, I won't be involved in any of the decision-making, just the fact that there was an opportunity for everyone to participate who had expressed an interest. And then after that's done, this will come back to Commissioners Court for your approval.
So really, you're just, we're still going through a modified bid process, but instead of the county umbrella handling these bids, we say, okay, Sheriff, we trust you to handle this bid process.
Yes, well, true competitive bid process goes in the newspaper. You write all the specifications like the American Rescue Plan. You'll remember, I sent that to you and it's about a half inch thick of paperwork. So this allows the sheriff to contact the vendors that he would like to use and anyone that would like to participate, I'm sure has already contacted him, and then make the best decision for the county based on his experience and the inmates that are in jail.
Sheriff, will you explain to us why this is indeed going to yield us the, the best possible deal for your department if we don't go through?
Well, it just cuts a lot of, lot of paperwork. Uh, and I believe the last time we did it, James, didn't you do it for us? Um, and it's, and it's just, it's a much easier process if we can just call instead of having to do all the paperwork the department has to go through, we have to go through. Uh, and you get the same results, it's just a lot easier. It's working smarter, not harder, basically is what we're doing. So it just, I mean, you're still getting the bids out, the same people that had the opportunity before will still have the same opportunity to come in and bid again and, but it'll just be done through us because we know all the companies, so we'll just contact them directly. And, and it'll shorten the time too, it, it don't take years long, it's just going to make the process, uh, a lot easier.
How many possible providers are there out there? I mean, I know nationwide, there's hundreds of these, but.
Well, that's interesting, that's the serial report we've had. I've, I've got four on board right now that have already come through.
So there, there's a fairly limited number as to the number of people that would, would even remotely be interested in providing these services to you.
Yes.
Okay?
And remember, only, only bidding, we'll go five years, still, we have a, we always put a clause in there that if they don't hold up, they're in the bargain or their food quality's not what we want, we, we can still, uh, manage to get out of that if we want and put up another bid. So we, we still protect ourselves through a five-year deal, but it's, it's worked out good though. I mean, Five Star's really, really did a good job and, and, uh, so I don't, but I don't know if they win the next bid, but the company may come in and undercut them and we'll go with them. This, yeah, this would make it much easier on, on everybody and simplify it and make it a lot faster.
And again, not that we don't trust you to do this properly, but we still have some county oversight in that Barbara can take your worksheets and double check that you've done this the right way and that everybody indeed had a fair shot at this and everybody is aware.
And you guys, this is a contract, I can't enter a contract without your guys' approval. So you will have to look at it and put your approval on it also. So it's not just me, I mean, what I'm doing is just kind of taking the work ourselves and just doing it. And everything else is the same, you guys still have to approve it because it is a contract, I cannot.
But you can't favor a friend of yours that's in this business because, because we are going to be back checking on this.
And I don't have any friends in that business, but, yeah. But, yeah, it's, uh, it is, no, it's, it's still going to be, the end result still will be up to Commissioners Court. It's not going to be up to me, it's going to be up to you guys.
But, but the process itself, we, we have some oversight through the Auditor's Department who can basically, again, take your worksheets and, and verify that you've done it properly.
We won't be anything just, we'll, we'll, anything we do, it'll be in private, so Barbara.
Yeah, it's got to go.
Yeah. We'll put everything in private.
We've got three pieces of this. Uh, let's look at item A and then we'll under, or should, do we need to understand what's at play there in item B and C, Barbara, before we vote on A?
I think it's just really standard procedure. We ask that you approve the discretionary exemption and then, um, the statute also says that, that, um, the commissioners are to approve the, uh, form used for solicitation, so that form, the sheriff's already gotten it, Captain Price has it, and then the five-year solicitation calendar. If you want that to be shorter, you can do that. My recommendation is you leave it at five and if the sheriff's unhappy with that, then he can come back to you at that time and make that decision.
So we could, uh, can we approve all this as one item?
With one vote, I believe so.
Okay.
Make a word, make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, Commissioner Parchman, make, make some motion that we grant a discretionary exemption from competitive bidding for the purchase of food using the tabulation form provided by the Auditor's Office and seek a five-year solicitation, uh, calendar for these food purchases.
Second?
Second was Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion or questions for Sheriff or Barbara?
This one you guys need to remember, thank you for the good news, it is going to make it simpler, but you guys need to remember, there's nothing to, the only thing that's going to change is just, this is going to make it faster, we're still having oversight of the Auditor's Office, we're still having oversight of you guys, because you guys will still have to look at it. Because like I say, I cannot enter a bid, I mean, a contract has to be done through the Commissioners Court and, uh, it's out of the Auditor's Office, so that's all of that, we're still something.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Barbara. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve enrolling the county in the state mandated cybersecurity training course to fulfill Texas Government Code 2054 dot 5191. We've done this before. It is good practice to have all of our employees take a brief and what I consider to be a very good quality cybersecurity training course. It's not real lengthy, it's not a multi-part that takes up many hours. Uh, it is a very good training course that they can take at the comfort of their own desk, on their own computer and learn about what the latest, uh, issues that we should be aware of in making sure that we don't download viruses and communicate with, uh, those who are intent on stealing money from, from the county. Uh, I, I think it's a really good course. I would ask that you approve allowing me and James to enroll the county in this cybersecurity training course so that we are abiding by, uh, the need to fulfill the Texas Government Code, uh, here.
Make a motion.
Motion made in favor of enrolling the county, made by Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number 10 and 11, it looks like they're kind of interrelated and we'll let- Item number 10 and 11, it looks like they're kind of interrelated, and we'll let Commissioner Applewhite kind of explain this, but item number 10 is discussing the sale of a tractor and side cutter through Auctioneer Express. Tell us about that decision, Commissioner Applewhite.
We, we purchased a piece of machinery from Bain, Bain Company, and it was a, it's a track, it's a tractor and escalator machine, and we can put a, if we do this, we can get rid of this tractor, and we can add on to this, on the number, item number 11 to put on the machine. So I hadn't put it with Auctioneer yet, I hadn't, this is just a, until I get it, because it's going to be about 90 days right by, when I get it, so I'll have the side cutter.
So that you're essentially replacing an old one with a new one. These two, even though they sound different...
They are different.
About the same, but they're used for the same kind of work or no?
Yes, it's one of the, the tractor, the tractor stuff, it, it has a side mower on it. This other machine, it's got adapter attachment to go on it to use it as a side cutter, and that way we eliminate this piece of machinery.
Okay. So it's different pieces of equipment, but they're designed to do, to accomplish the same objectives? And you want to sell an older machine? How old is this tractor and side cutter?
Oh, 2000 and, what, what it is, 2000, somewhere in there.
20 years old, roughly?
I'd say, I'd say 15.
15 years old, okay.
We have fixed it back up, cost us a lot of money, so, and it's, it'll take the, this here little machine, it'll take it all that, this, all the money we put in it, there won't be as much put in that tractor on this machine than that tractor was.
All right, so first things first, discuss, we've discussed that possible action. Will you grant Commissioner Applewhite authority to liquidate, sell that tractor and side cutter through Auctioneer Express?
Make a motion. What do you have there?
Motion to approve that action made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And going right along with that, item number 11, discuss the purchase of a diamond, DER 040-C, 40-inch excavator rotary mower from George Bain Inc. for $16,876.57. Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve that purchase.
Second.
So I'm gonna let Commissioner...
Fitch.
Fitch have that second. Any discussions or questions about this? All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, discuss possible usage for a 2003 tanker fire truck that was previously turned in from Five Star with possible action for what to do with it. Commissioner Fitch?
Okay, we received a 2003 tanker truck, it's a thousand gallon tanker truck, and has a spray unit on it for, using it for fighting grass fires, too. We got that turned into us from Five Star last year. I just got the title changed over, probably had a lost title, and it took, I probably had it, it's only been titled for about three or four months, so it basically just sat around my yard. I drove it and used it, sprayed water a couple of times, once I got it registered, and it's in really great shape, has 7,000 miles on it, and, uh, Five, Sugar Hill needs a tanker truck. They were due one, and now they've dropped down to the bottom of a list through the Fire, Forestry Service to get a new tanker truck. They don't have one. This is the most basic service that volunteer fire, firemen do. They'll drive the tanker truck out and bring water to the fire to assist Mount Pleasant and the other firefighters. And so with the small amount of volunteers we have at Sugar Hill, this should give them some, an extra job they can be doing, be more useful, and it'd be good use for this truck. So we want to loan it to them for six months and see how that goes, and see if things, if they can attend more fires, and it helps, the department helps the community and everything, and see how that goes. If that works out really good, then we're just going to give that to them. And of course, we'll get this truck back when they get them a new tanker, or they want to replace it. Of course, the county can get the truck back eventually, and we'll, we'll use it for something. So I wanted to make that motion to let them, to let them borrow that truck for six months.
And this is a tanker truck carrying water, which is one of the most basic elements of a volunteer fire department's responsibility. That's one of the things that Chief McCray has stated on numerous occasions, is one of the things, you know, he may not be able to get the quantities and the training in the group that shows up from any particular volunteer fire department, but if he can get some water there on the scene, that will help. You're saying that, that Sugar Hill doesn't have that capability right now?
They don't have that, and they just have some rush trucks.
The only one in the county don't have a tank.
Yeah, okay. The only one that doesn't have one. It's an easy truck to drive, it's automatic, it's a 550 chassis, so it's like a, a one-ton duly sized truck, and it really drives really nice. It's, anybody could drive it without a special license or anything, so it should come in really handy for them.
It's a thousand gallon.
It's a thousand gallons, yeah.
Okay, so this is a loan, and I like the fact that we're, we're not transferring ownership. Sugar Hill is, is struggling on a number of levels, and if they don't have anything like this, I think a loan of this piece of equipment would be reasonable. That'll give us some time to see how they're going to do. But honestly, I, I do have still serious reservations about this department and their ability to, to continue. So with this loan for six months, I, would you mind reserving the right to call that piece of equipment back into alternate service?
Yes.
If something comes to light and it's just sitting there not getting used, or whatever might be going on in Sugar Hill? You okay with that? Would you mind modifying that?
Make that motion to loan on the tanker, own loan for six months with the right to recall it if it's not getting used properly.
I second that.
Okay, a motion and a second regarding item number 12, to allow this 2003 tanker fire truck to be loaned to Sugar Hill for up to six months with the right of recall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we get a second on it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
There wasn't opposed, was there?
No.
Okay.
Will they transfer that over, or how, no, how will they get insurance on it? How will they get, how will Sugar Hill, will they provide the insurance on it, everything?
Yes, they'll have to insure it, but I mean, don't have to change the title over until later.
Okay, that's fine.
Are pieces of equipment like this insured by the county?
I have it insured on my policy, on that group policy.
Well, I think pieces of equipment...
So I've got it insured, I mean, so...
This comes under pieces of equipment that would normally be insured by the county anyway, right?
Yes, it's on our insurance.
Oh, it's on our insurance anyway.
And I don't, I don't think that Sugar Hill can get coverage for it if it's not in their name.
Okay, so just leave it like it is?
So we would leave it there for now.
Okay.
Unless y'all wanted to require them.
But even if, even if it was transferred to Sugar Hill, is this not a piece of equipment that falls under the insurance that the county provides for the fire departments?
That's a separate policy.
That's a separate policy.
We do, we do pay for that, but Brad Eubanks oversees that.
Okay.
And that's a separate policy.
So in this particular case, because we're not transferring ownership, we'll continue to provide the insurance. That's good, good point.
Okay.
All right, item number 13, we are down to our oral and written reports.
Make a motion or approve the reports.
Have a motion for approval from Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion, any questions for Barbara here on these reports? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next to that, we have item number 14, it's your treasurer's report provided by Cheryl.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Questions, comments? Pass these down to you, for your signature.
Everybody gonna vote on it? All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm getting old, John. I think I may have got that right. No, I think I may have left that attached to the back of that. Right, we have budget amendment number 2022-15. You'll recall that our last meeting two weeks ago, we approved the purchase of bunker gear for the volunteer fire departments in the amount of $33,543. This budget amendment pulls that amount out of county contingency and applies that to volunteer fire department bunker gear. The reason for the adjustment, in Barbara's words, to budget funds for bunker gear for volunteer fire departments in the amount of $33,543 funded by general county contingency as approved in court on March 14, 2022. That is the only amendment I have.
Make a motion, we approve the amendment.
Motion to approve that one amendment, Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number 16, sign pay orders and approve payment of current bills.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 17, closing comments by Judge and Commissioners. Have a nice card here from the Fitch family thanking the county. Thank you so much for the beautiful floral arrangement. We deeply appreciate your kind expression of sympathy during our time of loss from the family of Bob Fitch. And let's see, I think y'all made a great decision on that grant today. That's, I just want to, I just want to mention Diamond C. again. The Diamond C. is just exploding and purchasing property all over town, keeping everything local, hiring new employees. They run a fantastic operation, and we wish the very best for them. I think that this joint project, I think we're getting more than, probably, you know, we're getting a great deal here on this to have much of our road converted to a concrete road, and that will take care of problems for many years to come. So let's hope that we are able to get that grant. But anyway, that's all I have. Commissioner Parchman?
The only thing I have is brought to my understanding that Commissioner Parker has a birthday today.
Who?
We won't, we won't go back. 68, I don't believe.
I think it's unknown. It's unknown.
That's all.
I'm afraid so. And I can tell every day of it, too.
Congratulations, making him work on his birthday. Anything else?
Happy birthday, Jimmy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Happy birthday, Jimmy.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
I don't have any.
Condolences to you, Jimmy. All right, thank you, Sheriff, Captain. Anything else? Am I forgetting anything, ladies? All right, if you'll make a motion to adjourn, we'll do just that.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.